Education to Order, the Board would like to welcome the audience and thanks you for attending. Viewers can watch TCAP's Board of Education meetings and committee meetings live or on demand at any time at tcaps.net/Board. Please, I probably would need a help on pronunciation on the...
Shoperay?
Shoperay?
Shoperay.
Shoperay, sorry, I apologize. Please join and join Ms. Shoperay's 4th grade class from Long Lake Elementary in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're the review approval portion of the agenda, and I think John is there.
Two things, so, one is we have, as I had mentioned in Finance Committee, we do have everything together now for the purchase of the electric school bus through the combination of the EPA federal grant and Michigan State MDE grant, those combined together, and so you have that information with you tonight. And the second is a discussion I had in my superintendent's report, but talking to Scott, we talked to put that as a discussion item for the central grade school.
High school.
Central high school bond, I think, wrong central, sir.
Okay. So those will become two separate items, both discussion adding in D and E. And then in that order, I guess, will be...
School bus.
School bus, and then central high school.
So I will make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Okay, second. Any other comments? One second. Although, actually, I do have to do a roll call vote, I believe, right, on the exchange of amendments, so if we can do a roll call vote.
So trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Moon Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Pat?
Yes.
And trustee Newman-Bell?
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to recognition, obviously an important day, and defer to Dr. Van Wengler for recognition.
Thank you, and again, today is Veterans Day. So when we started looking at the recognition for this month, we thought it'd be a great idea to recognize all the veterans that we have working within TCAPs. Connie Taylor had the opportunity, our associate superintendent, to go across the district and meet with and provide certificates to all of our veterans across the district. And so what we did is I asked her to go through and take a picture of each one of them. So Larry, you know, does awesome things with his videos. We asked him today to put a video together that recognizes all those employees for the board and the community to be able to see and recognize all those individuals and thank them for their service and how proud we are to have them a part of our organization, so. Anything to add to that, Connie?
I would just say that we send out a survey every year to have people self-identify because it's otherwise not information that we collect. So if we miss anybody on this presentation, hopefully they'll let us know about their service so in future years we can continue to honor them as well.
So we have a video, but we'll go ahead and play. So again, we appreciate all of those that have served, and we would like to just take a moment and just give them a round of applause. So, you know, it's a great kind of culmination. We have our kids a part of the Patriot game and have the opportunity to bring the veterans all there, and I think that the district is very, very proud of the recognitions we do and are happy to have that coming today with our Veterans Day certificates and individuals, and just again want to thank them for their service, so, thank you.
All right, moving on to the next agenda item, public comment. Assuming there's public comment. The Board has set aside this time for public comment, and individuals addressing the Board shall have one opportunity to speak and shall be limited to three minutes. Individuals should not make personal attacks unrelated to actions affecting the school system, and we strongly encourage common courtesy and constructive feedback. Detailed rules and procedures, including a complaint process, are outlined in Board Policy 0167.3. Stacy?
First speaker is Gail Lampier.
First, I want to thank you all for having this opportunity to come and speak, and I just wanted to speak on behalf of our racial justice working group at the Presbyterian Church in Traverse City. We are very grateful and encouraged by the fact that the Indigenous Peoples' Day, you had a half-day of education, indigenous education, that is just so important, and thanks to Dr. Van Wengler, the board, and the staff for that. I also wanted to say that our group has for three years been doing different educational events to tell the complex and hopefully eventually the complete history of the indigenous people of this region. And we're encouraged that this, now I'm not going to pronounce this right, probably, which is what's written by five indigenous women, I believe, and that that is beginning to be implemented in your TCAP system. That, to us, is so hopeful, and we want to encourage the use of that manual. So thank you so much.
The next speaker is Bill Wiesner.
Bill Wiesner, Traverse City. And I'd like to speak on the sexually explicit books that are in the libraries at TCAPs. And there's a list of 52 books. It's a great website, it's takebacktheclassroom.com, I think? Just Google "Take Back the Classroom." Better yet, go to my website, tcfamily.org, and read through the chart. I made an Excel chart, made a PDF of it, and you can see all 52 books that are listed there. And TCAPs has, TC West has 32 of the books, and TC Central has 35. But anyway, and you can go to the hot links and say, for example, one of the controversial books is "All Boys Aren't Blue." Just click on it there. And it's from tcfamily.org, shows you the picture, the cover of the book, and then you just slide on through here. It's got a whole bunch of excerpts from it. So read through that and see if it's not sexually explicit, and tell me one good reason that these books should be in the libraries. So it's a great resource to see. There's 18 of the books that TCAPs has that they have, they only have reviews of 25 of the 52. They're continually building more reviews, so there'll be more. So that's one thing. Okay. And the other thing is from the meeting, I think I mentioned this last time, but the interviews of the candidates, and it was at the library, and Josie mentioned one thing, I'm just commenting what she said, and I disagree on the interpretation. We only have a minute, so I'll probably continue it some other time, but... I asked the League of Women Voters to ask, "Since there's 500 books in TC West Library promoting homosexuality and not one on the other side compassionate view, could you comment on that?" And the League asked, "Should books on homosexuality be taken out of the school library?" Something like that. It wasn't the question I asked, it was totally different. But, and Josie mentioned, I'll just start it now. She says, basically, there are words, the only thing I can say is that the world has really changed ever since I grew up 40 years ago. There are certain words that are just so mainstream and common in public-private schools, for that matter, that are not acceptable anymore. I'm out of time, and I'll continue on that later, but there's a lot of reasons that that's incorrect. Thank you.
It's the last of the comments.
Okay. Moving on to superintendent's report, defer to Dr. Van Wengler.
Okay, so for our superintendent's report, we're going to start right off. I'm going to pass it off to our Assistant Superintendent Christine Temesil to introduce a team for our audit report.
Yes, so we have Dave Nielsen here today to give a small presentation about the audit. He's with Manor Castarason, quite timely, since we just did a study session on the budget and looked at a lot of information in the annual report. He does reference some page numbers along the way, so if you want to look at that information corresponding to the presentation slide, feel free. I'll go ahead and let Dave get started.
Thank you very much, thanks for having me here tonight. Excuse me, I've got a cold going on, like many people, I'm sure. I did want to say thank you to Christine and to Wes, Sandy and Julie back there, and the rest of the team. As part of the audit, we do ask for a lot, a lot of information. They responded timely and accurately to all of our requests, so I certainly appreciate that and all the team appreciates it. It just makes things go a lot smoother and more efficiently from an audit perspective. We began our audit back in June with some preliminary audit fieldwork. That's where we do most of our risk assessment work. We came back in August, or actually very end of July, to do our final audit fieldwork on the financial statements for TCAPs. And then I sit here tonight. I actually met with the Finance Committee when I was here in July, that was a good meeting. I'm here tonight to report on the audit for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2024. I believe you've got a nice big packet somewhere in front of you. That's the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. The audited financial statements are included in that big packet, so the page numbers that Christine referenced, they're on my slides tonight. Those are the page numbers within that big report. Okay, a little bit of background on Manor and who we are. Located in Lansing, Michigan, we also have a Grand Rapids office. We have over 50 staff dedicated to our education niche. We audit over 110 school districts from the state of Michigan annually. I've got pretty strong credentials, I think, being members of MSBO and MASB, as well as the 1022 Committee for the State, a single audit referent group, MICPA, AICPA, et cetera. But I think what that, the purpose of that being on this slide is to let you know that we are able to advise the state on accounting considerations that they may have. We can also pass along some advice to our school district clients when we hear it from the state, so it's a good relationship. One other thing I wanted to mention on the staff piece of it. We try to rotate our staff members that are on this audit every year so that we have a fresh set of eyes. I'm on the audit, our manager's on the audit, but the other two or three people that are involved in the audit are new almost every year. So we do have a fresh set of eyes looking at your records each year for the financial statement. A little bit behind the audit process here, I mentioned that we started in June with our risk assessment and our expectations. We do some of our fraud risk assessments during that time period as well. We come back in August, we perform our final audit fieldwork, where we're doing inquiries and analytical procedures, substantive procedures, all to test the information that's in the financial statements to make sure that it is materially accurate. The audits are due to the state by October 31 of 2024, so your audit was filed timely. One other piece of information on here, in addition to the audit of the financial information, TCAPs does spend more than $750,000 in federal funds, so you are required to have a single audit or a federal compliance audit, as some people refer to it. As part of that piece of the engagement, we are looking at the key internal controls that are in place for the directed material compliance requirements for the major federal program we test for the single or the federal expenditure. So I just wanted to mention that as well. We also certainly act in accordance with the AICPA Code of Professional Conduct. That's stated up on the slide there. And then it all boils down to our independent auditor's report that we issue at the conclusion of our audit. A couple of highlights from that independent auditor's report are on this slide, which is found on page 12 of the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. On the financial statements themselves, we issued an unmodified opinion. That is essentially a clean audit opinion. It's the highest level of assurance that we can give as auditors, so kudos there. A lot of hard work goes into that to make those financial statements accurate as of year-end. We also issue a couple of other reports. They're located further back in that packet. They're in relation to internal controls over financial reporting. That report is required by government auditing standards. So you have generally accepted auditing standards that we utilize, plus the government auditing standards, so a little bit more, a little bit higher level of scrutiny with the government auditing standards. We had no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal control of financial reporting for this year. The last report that we issue is on compliance for the major programs. I mentioned that briefly. On compliance for the major federal program that we tested, we had an unmodified opinion for that as well. So no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies in internal control over those major federal programs. So that's a clean, those are clean highlights from the auditor's reports, if you will. Okay, on to the audit results. Now, we're on page 3 of the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. It's in the transmittal letter section. Your Annual Comprehensive Financial Report is made up of a few different sections. The introductory section, the financial section, and the statistical section. So we're in the introductory section right now on page 3 of the transmittal letter. Couple interesting statistics up here that come, these are actually from the 2022-2023 financial information that we're able to gather because the 2023-24 is not all submitted to the state yet or hadn't been as of the time this was prepared. General fund revenues for TCAPs, out of the 817 districts in the state, you are ranked 556. In terms of general administration dollars for general fund expenditures, you are ranked 794 out of 817. But I think the really neat statistic up here is the last one. Average teacher salary in the state of Michigan, you are ranked 105. So despite having a funding level of 556 out of 817, you are utilizing your resources to invest in the teachers from the district to educate the children. That's 105 on the state rank. Okay, this is page 7 of the report. It's a 10-year history of the taxable values that drive your property tax revenue. So you can see a pretty consistent increase over the past 10 years. That is nice. It may not always happen that way, but currently, the way that 10-year graph shows it is a nice steady increase over the past 10 years. I do always think it's pretty important to note that TCAPs maintains a millage rate for the debt funds of 3.1 mills. That's pretty low, so I think that's pretty impressive, that you're able to utilize that 3.1 millage rate, still issue the proper amount of bonds to be able to invest in your facilities here and repay the debt in a timely manner. Some general fund budgetary highlights on the next slide. There are a lot of words on this slide, I will acknowledge that. A couple of things that are key takeaways, I would say, from this slide. Number one, the second-to-last bullet point does note that there is approximately $777,000 in carryover. Those are for items such as curriculum or vehicles that were included in the budget last year, but they just didn't come in before year-end, so the expenditures were not incurred in fiscal year '24. Those items have been carried over and reserved from fund balance for fiscal year '25. Another thing to note here, and you'll see it when you get to a couple more slides here on the financial statements themselves, you did have an increase in the general fund fund balance for fiscal year '24, and that is certainly nice. We all are aware that the ESAR funding has gone away. That was done as of September 30, 2024. So districts in the state of Michigan are now faced with having to make sure that they have structurally balanced budgets going forward. So that's something I mentioned in all of the school district board meetings. Just as a reminder, I'm sure you are well aware, but it is a good thing to remember. The ESAR funds were great, but we don't have those anymore, so we have to make sure we've got balanced budgets going forward. Okay, there are two factors bearing on the district's future that are included on page 23 of the packet. The first factor is housing difficulties and staffing challenges. Limited affordable housing, competition from nonresidents, staffing shortages. The district has done a really nice job of putting this information together for readers of the financial statements, including providing potential solutions. I actually don't see that a lot when I look at the factors bearing on a district's future. Most often, it just states the factor, it doesn't have a solution. So I thought that was pretty unique. The second factor is on the loss of the one-time funding for federal and state side of things. And I did briefly just mention that, but really the key issue is the loss of funding, disappearance of one-time revenues will result in a significant decrease in the district's budget. That has an impact on programs and services, certainly. And then sustainability of any current initiatives that may have been started while you had that increased funding. So some potential solutions listed up there. Diversify revenue streams, prioritize essential services, implement cost-saving measures, review current initiatives, advocate for increased state funding, and long-term planning. Couple more additional considerations on this slide. This is on page 24 of your packet. Certainly fund balance, general fund fund balance as a percentage of expenditures and transfers out, which we'll see, I believe, on the next slide, is 11.77%. So very close to that 12% target. But maintaining a healthy fund balance is certainly crucial for financial stability. State funding, continuing to monitor that, and then long-term planning for a comprehensive financial plan. All right, we have the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances for the governmental funds at June 30, 2024. This is on page 33. You have three major funds in your financial statements. The first one being the general fund. The other two are the 2021 and 2023 Capital Projects Funds. The remainder of the funds for food service, student activities, debt service, those are combined into that total non-major funds column. So on this slide, we can see here, the general fund had an increase in fund balance of $963,000 approximately. The 2021 and 2023 Capital Projects Funds, a significant decrease. That's to be expected as you spend those funds making investments in district facilities. Across to all funds, there was a decrease in fund balance of $15.6 million. But back to the first column, your general fund, total fund balance at the end of the year is just over $15 million. Again, that's 11.77% of expenditures and transfers out. Oh, one other thing I can mention here, too, the principal repayment. You can see that in that total non-major column, just under $18 million. That's your required debt service payments, in case you were curious about that. Okay, on page 37, we get into the notes to the basic financial statements. I like to highlight this page because it's a summary of the expenditures for the 2021 and 2023 bonds that were issued. We do audit those bonds in accordance with Section 1351A of the Revised School Code, as well as the bond language that's approved by the voters. And we audit a very high percentage of those expenditures because we recognize that those are important monies, they've been approved by the voters. There are state legislation around that. We need to make sure that those funds are being spent appropriately. We didn't have any findings as a result of our testing for either of those two major funds. Right, on page forty nine of your packet, our next slide here is the detail of the district's capital assets at June thirty, two thousand and twenty four. Of the total additions to the capital assets during the year of about twenty five, about twenty million approximately. A majority of that was transportation, parking lot renovations at various buildings, technology enhancements, athletic complexes, et cetera. You're probably well aware of what the money has been spent on during the year, so I don't need to recite all of that to you. But this is a summary snapshot of the capital assets at June thirty, two thousand and twenty four. Overall net capital assets at the end of the year of approximately two hundred and nine million. The next slide we have is on page fifty one of your packet. It's a detail of the long term obligations at June thirty, two thousand and twenty four. This allows you to see that the district has eighty seven million approximately in total general long term obligations. Of that, about eighty five million or eighty five point two million is related to the total general obligation bonds outstanding. That number does include about eight million dollars of issuance premiums. Overall, total long term obligations of approximately eighty seven million. There are a couple of upcoming accounting pronouncements to mention briefly here. The first one, this is on page sixty five of your packet. The first one is related to GASB one oh one. That's called compensated abstances. That one is effective for June thirty, two thousand and twenty five. We are currently working off GASB sixteen for compensated abstances, I believe, that's the reference. So it's been a little while since we've had a new accounting standard related to compensated abstances. As you can imagine, the forms of PTO have changed since GASB sixteen came out. The manner in which people use their PTO has changed. So this new standard encompasses or updates the accounting standards for the changes in PTO. That will be effective for this current fiscal year that you're in. There are two other standards, GASB one oh two is called certain risk disclosures. That's effective for fiscal year twenty six. And then there is GASB one oh three, certain financial reporting model improvements. That is effective for fiscal year twenty six as well. The impact there is going to be primarily on the management discussion and analysis information, as well as your budget to actual general fund comparison schedule. So there's going to be some additional transparency around those two pieces of your report. Okay, speaking of the budgetary comparison schedule, we have that on our next slide, that's page sixty eight of your packet. In terms of the final budget. You projected a draw from fund balance of approximately one point five million. You did have the add to fund balance in terms of actual results of about nine hundred and sixty three thousand. But what I wanted to mention is the variance between the final and actual, final budget and actual results for total revenues. Total revenues were under the final budget by about five point two million. You can see total expenditures are also under by about seven point six million. The primary driver there is about five point three million of budgeted grants that were not fully spent before year end. So they were included in the budget at full, full amounts. Those weren't spent before year end, so the revenue is deferred as of year end. It's considered unearned revenue on the balance sheet. When those funds are spent in fiscal year twenty five, that revenue then gets recognized. So revenue and expenses both under budget. The remaining variance is about one point one four percent. It's pretty consistent with your conservative budgeting and spending policy. So overall, very well done on your budgetary comparison schedule here. I know a lot of hard work goes into that. It does show great fiscal accountability when you've got a budget that you stick to. You did not overspend your budget, and that's important too, because by state law, if you overspend the budget, that is a finding. So kudos there, well done on the budgetary comparison schedule. Our next slide. We jump ahead about fifty pages in the packet. We are into the statistical section of the annual comprehensive financial report now. This slide shows a ten year historical analysis of the history of general fund fund balance or fund equity. So that has slowly increased over the past ten years from seven point four four percent in fiscal year fifteen to eleven point seven seven percent in fiscal year twenty four. So well done there, a lot of hard work, I imagine, has gone into that increase over the past ten years. A lot of hard work goes into increasing it four percent. But I was curious, I took a look, the statewide average for general fund fund balance is twenty one point two percent of total expenditures. Within the Northwest Education Services District, and this, these figures are as of fiscal year twenty three, because we don't have all the final results for fiscal year twenty four yet. But the statewide average was twenty one point two percent. The districts within the Northwest Education Services average was twenty one percent. Some similar districts to TCAPS. Farmington Hills was twenty point nine percent. Forest Hills down in the Grand Rapids area was thirteen point three percent. Portage down by Kalamazoo was eighteen point two percent. And then Kentwood again in the Grand Rapids area was thirteen point nine percent. So it gives you an idea, those districts have about nine thousand kids as well. Gives you an idea of some similar sized districts to TCAPS in terms of what their fund balances. Okay, we have a ten year history of the state aid membership for TCAPS here as well on page one thirty six. Ten years ago it was just under ten thousand. At June thirty, two thousand and twenty four, you are down to just under eighty nine hundred. That presents a challenge. The minimum foundation amounts have increased over the past ten years from seventy one twenty six, ten years ago, up to ninety six oh eight for fiscal year twenty four. That has, will remain the same currently for fiscal year twenty five. And then we do have this slide here, page one fifty four. It's the schedule of findings and question costs for the year into June thirty, two thousand and twenty four. It's a summary of the audit results essentially. You'll see at the top, it states that we had an unmodified opinion or audit opinion on the financial statements. We had no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies related to internal control over financial reporting. We also had no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal control over the major federal program, which was the child nutrition. Forgot to mention that earlier. Child nutrition cluster.
Thank you.
And we had no other audit findings that we are required to report. TCAPS was a low risk audit T for fiscal year twenty four. So that is as clean of a schedule of findings and question costs as you can have as a school district. So kudos there, a lot of hard work goes into that. Any questions on the audit process, financial statements? I'm happy to help.
Yeah, I would say one of the things that, I mean, there's a lot of things that stood out, but the admin expenses being seven hundred and ninety four out of eight hundred and seventeen. I think it was seven ninety four, but kudos to, that's a question that we get asked all the time and quite clearly, we're doing quite well in that category, and I think people think we aren't, but appreciate the efforts.
Could you read off those fund balance percentages again for those schools?
So I was curious about the similar sized districts, or did you want to hear all of them?
Just the ones similar to us.
So Farmington Hills was twenty point nine percent. Around Eastside. Forest Hills was thirteen point three percent. Portage was eighteen point two percent. And Kentwood Public Schools was thirteen point nine percent, and those are as of June thirty, two thousand and twenty three.
Thank you.
And do they take quite an uptick maybe from COVID funds or something? Because I feel like that is disproportionately higher than what we
You know, I would tell you that I, I would love to see it, and I probably will now, is I bet if you look at their revenues per student of what they get compared to ours, it's quite about higher. In fact, I mean, I know Farmington Hills, suburb of Kalamazoo, suburb of Grand Rapids, Forest Hills. We just don't receive the revenue, you know, with those things, and we don't have, we have costs that they don't with transportation, for instance. You know, we are at an equity disadvantage in so many ways, being as large as we are, not having some of the, you know, the tax elements of what was there before proposably in nineteen ninety four. Look at some of the federal funds and stuff that they receive more. It adds up, and so with us being as low as we are on that list of, of students. I think we were five eighty four, was it? What were we comparison in the
Five fifty six.
Five fifty six in revenue of over a little over a hundred districts. That's a telling number, you know, from that standpoint, but yet, you know, and rightfully so, other teachers are, you know, in the top, you know, just almost in the top one hundred. So we put our money into our people that are in front of kids every day for the most part. And again, administration, we're almost, like, almost at the bottom, you know, from that standpoint. So gives you an idea of where we put our money, and we do that, and so we run a little bit leaner fund balance than other places because of that.
Well, that would make sense, but I hear when I'm talking to other school boards, it seems to be noticeably lower, and I feel like, again, this is a lot of numbers, and I'm thinking a year ago, a lot of numbers. But I feel like that twenty one point two, I think, was the state average, and that, I feel like that was a large jump year on year, wasn't it? Wasn't it usually in the higher teens?
Yeah, I'd have to go back and look at the previous year to be accurate with my response there, but yeah, I'm sure it was an increase, yeah.
The other thing I'll mention across Northwest Ed is you take the entire Lelandoff Peninsula now is out of formula. So they are funded completely by property tax dollars and not by a foundation per student. And so you're able to build much more of a fund equity because you get more, because you collect all the property tax dollars.
Just a quick question on the, the teacher salaries. Does that also reflect that we're retaining more staff and that we're having more experienced teachers as part of that? Is that where some of that is?
Season staff, yes. What's that compared to others? I couldn't tell you. My guess would be no, for the most part, I think across the state. You know, we kind of have the very end of the baby boomer generation retiring, you know, kind of a large group of, of teachers were hired, you know, within about twenty five years ago, and that element across the state. So my guess would be that we might be a little heavier on that end, but not that much different than most districts.
Yeah, maybe just two comments. One, just congratulations to Assistant Superintendent Thomas Hill, Wes, Sandy and Julie in the back. You know, this clean audit opinions and clean audit reports like this are definitely not the normal. So congratulations for all the hard work and the results obviously speak for themselves. And then maybe just to piggyback on some of the comments that Dr. Van Wagner said. Obviously, this report is a hundred and fifty plus pages. Pages two and three really paint us a picture of kind of the inherent challenges that we have as a district. You know, like Dr. Van Wagner mentioned, just where we're at on, on all sources of fund revenues. You know, it talks about just the geographical size of the Traverse City area school district. By wide margin is the largest in terms of square miles in the top twenty five school districts in the state of Michigan. So obviously, we have some inherent expenses that a lot of districts don't incur. But at the same time, you know, obviously, we're, we're spending money where our priorities are, and that's in teacher education and teacher salaries. So, yeah, I just thought pages two and three really paint a, a picture that I think is the most important of these pages, so.
Using those tax dollars well, thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, yes, thanks again to the team. It is, I've done other public work and not too many clean total, let alone the run you guys have been on, so thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, a few other things, so legislative update. So now that we are through election day, we are here starting to hear some things about the lame duck time in Lansing. So the legislature is actually meeting this week, which is kind of a little bit abnormal for this time of, of year. Normally, after the election, we don't see a lot happening until about the last nine days before the holiday break. But they are gathering some things together right now. I think there's some big, big ticket items that Lansing's looking at. Economic development's a priority for the governor, and with the House changing in the election to the Republicans gain majority. Essentially, things are going to go fast and furious here, and we don't know what that might affect for schools. We think that there's some different conversations with some things that are happening. Health insurance may be one of them and some others, so keeping an eye on that. Might be a trip to Lansing for me late in, in December. So we see this week, and then the legislature goes on about a two week hunting break. Traditional in the state of Michigan.
Hunting of what kind?
Don't know. And yard signs, maybe, I'm not sure. But, but we'll keep an eye on that and keep you updated because some big things could happen that could affect schools during that time. And so we'll, we'll make sure to work with our legislators. You know, as far as our state reps and senators are all the same for this matter after the election. So we'll continue to work with those relationships on both sides of the aisle to make sure that we're advocating for all the resources that we can, and maybe even some additional ones that still could come out here in lame duck, or making sure that more aren't taken away is probably as, as important in that way. So we'll kind of see where all that lands and go from there, so. And then for district highlights they have for you, first is the Be Smart Gun Safety Resolution. So the board approved the Be Smart Gun Safety Resolution in November of two thousand and twenty two, you may remember. Reminder of the importance of safe, secure firearm storage and other firearm safety and violence prevention measures will be shared in the November district letter. It's something we said in the resolution, we would do each year as we're getting towards deer season, firearm deer season on November fifteenth opening. It's always a good time of the year to remind our parents and all of our families and our community on the safety of all firearms. And so we wanted to make sure again to mention that tonight, and we'll have that in our newsletter and continue to put that out there over the next few months here as we approach this time of year, but really all season for the importance on that. Want to mention that we have open interviews. TCAPS will host interviews onsite, no appointments necessary here at the Glenn Loomis Administration Building at one thousand nine South Oak Street in Traverse City, right on the west end of Thirby Field. We'll have them on Wednesday, November twentieth from three to five. Interested, interested applicants may simply stop in during one of those designated date and times, and there are many posted positions that require no prior experience, and we do provide on the job training. Also coming up is the Central High School Musical musical. Performances run for two weekends, November fifteenth through November seventeenth and November twenty second. And you can get your tickets at tcaps/booktix.com, or you can call two three one nine three three six nine eight four, and ticket prices are twenty dollars per person. I've already got mine scheduled for the Friday, the first Friday of it. I'm excited to see our kids in our central musical and always a great opportunity to see the hard work they put in and, and appreciate that work. Also at Central High School, the marketing class in Ms. Harvey's class at Central High has started a junior achievement business called Cherry Capital Cozy Co. And they have items for your holiday shopping. If you're interested, you can visit their website at cherrycapitalcozyco.com. And so again, those are also always great items each year.
Were you saying it again, Cherry Capital?
Cherry Capital Cozy C O dot com. All, no, no spaces across Cherry Capital Cozy C O dot com.
And what do they sell?
They always sell different hats and shirts.
This year they have some coffee and hot chocolate mixes, I believe, a blanket.
They've got all kinds of things.
They have.
Water bottles.
At the homes, I have my sweatshirt at home and my plaid that I wore the other day with that, so. Always cool what they do and learn a lot of running a business and those things that is awesome. West Senior High Arts and Craft Show, the West Senior High Community Arts and Craft Show will be on Saturday, November sixteenth from ten to three. Proceeds from the event will go to the Titan Excellence Fund, and that is an awesome event if you've ever been. And that is an awesome event if you've ever been. It is packed right across all of West High School, the crafts and the different things that are there and the goodies. And every year I walk out with about four bags worth of stuff, stuff that I should buy and stuff that I shouldn't buy. But it's just a great, a great fundraiser. And again, for our community to be in our buildings and and support local small businesses across. Would strongly encourage people, if you haven't been, to check that out. And lots of things that could get on your holiday list that is provided right here in our local community. Also, I want to mention Native American Heritage Month. November is Native American Heritage Month. And this week, TCAPS Indigenous Education Program is sponsoring a Native American Heritage Spirit Week and National Rock Your Mox Week. A breakdown of the spirit weeks can be found on the Indigenous Education Program page on tcaps.com. Or tcaps.net, I'm sorry. Also, some athletic things, yeah.
I want to mention something. I've been getting people who've contacted me about the letter going out about Spirit Week and wondering if it's cultural appropriation or if it's something that's being forced on people by the board. Like people are being required to wear braids and mocks. It's there's a whole lot of rumors. And this is something that is put together by our Indigenous Education Coordinator and program. It's some of the the things that she's she does are actually what we would call like Indigenous youth stuff that we do all over the country. So it's to our communities, it's actually pretty normal and pretty good stuff. So it's not, and it's not forced on anybody. It's a celebration. So not cultural appropriation, and it's totally appropriate in most aspects of of what's going on. So just wanted to let people know. Come and celebrate.
Thank you. Athletics, Coach Lisa Taylor has been inducted into the Michigan Interscholastic Track Coaches Association, Metcalfe Hall of Fame for her thirty years of coaching at Traverse City Central High School. Under her leadership, the girls' cross-country team achieved numerous accolades, including one state championship, seventeen regional and twenty-two conference titles, and thirty-seven all-state athletes. Lisa was a state championship runner at Alma High School before earning All-American honors at Michigan State University. Also, we'll mention, I had the chance last week, we had a district semifinal with our girls volleyball between West and Central, as always, and the Central team prevailed. And also on Saturday, I had the chance to go watch them against Mount Pleasant, win their third district title in a row. So they are excited and I think are hoping for big things. And so congratulations to those young ladies. And and, you know, we're really excited for them and we'll keep cheering them on. And there, I think, at this point, our last winter sport at this point that's going. West High School Boys Football had a great run and made the playoffs and played a tough Mona Shores team in Miss Keegan. And and again, had a great year. So so many of our, so many of our sports and our activities. Band had just a fantastic season. I had the chance to watch them here at Thirby with their with the regional showcase that we have. That's every year just phenomenal. So a great fall. And now I'm hearing hockey season starting up and basketball and so many of those things. And again, the musical coming up. So again, our kids do great things from that standpoint with it.
Sorry, we have five, we have five lady swimmers going to states still in two weeks. So we've got between Central and West, we have that going on too still. So congrats to those girls. They just qualified this last weekend.
Good to know.
And one more shout out, West Senior High Girls Cross Country Team, I think, took eighth in the state. So super proud of those girls.
And I know we had a few girls from Central as well that also made states. And so, you know, did a great job. So so many great activities across the district, so many awesome things for our kids to be in. And so excited to see those last few things that are going for the fall and start up the winter, winter season. So with that, also just a calendar reminder, November twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, we have no school for the Thanksgiving break. So just a reminder for everybody on those as we start to get into more holiday season. And and today's weather kind of felt that way.
Sure did.
Is it also the twenty-seventh?
I don't believe so.
No, twenty, Wednesday. It's just Thursday, Friday, I think, is our break.
Always, always.
And that's it for my superintendent's report.
We have no school on Wednesday. There's no school on Wednesday.
Okay.
It's a teacher, it's a teacher workday.
Okay. Twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, day twenty-nine.
Okay, that's all I have for today.
All right. Okay, any questions? Otherwise, we'll move on to board committee reports. First out, Curriculum Committee, October twenty-ninth, reporting out by Erica Moonmore.
Yes, so we met on October twenty-ninth. Meeting was called to order at eight-thirty. There was no public comment. Moved into procedural items where the draft committee meeting minutes remain as posted. The TCAPS twenty-four, twenty-five district course catalog, there were no updates. So we moved into informational items. We had a board curriculum learning series, which was the tier-one academic data. So Jesse Houghton, our Chief Academic Officer for Secondary, and Dan Tyesworth, Chief Academic Officer for Elementary, provided an overview of the topic for this month's learning series. And I, we had a really full board. We had a lot of guests at the board. So just backing up a little bit, Kelly Obronovic, Aaron Sorensen, Kristen Studeman, Ben Berger and Nate Kepler were all there to help with the learning series. So first off, Kelly Obronovic, the instructional coach and JK through five curriculum specialist for ELA. And Aaron Sorensen, the instructional coach and JK through five curriculum specialist for math, provided an overview of the process for elementary data review using the protocol Got Data Now What. Phase one is making predictions. Phase two is exploring the data. For ELA, the district uses NWEA to review comprehension and aims web to review foundational skills. For math, the district uses NWA and Delta Math, which is the readiness standards. This helps to identify strengths and areas of need in the data set, which leads to phase three, where the team can create action plans for teachers to use with their students. After the data review, instructional coaches collaborate with teachers to plan for intentional instruction around targeted action plans engaging in multiple checkpoints. This coaching style helps to narrow the focus, making the goals helpful and actionable. So again, just just an overview while digging into the data. So number one, make predictions. Number two, explore the data. Number three, create action plans, specific things to do in the classroom. And then four, the data change. Then we moved on to secondary, where Kristen Studeman, who's the principal at West Middle School, provided an overview of the middle school data review process. Data is pulled at the end of each month and the school's full administrative and counseling teams meet to review the data and problem solve around students who need support. The counselors at the end of the month use power school data systems to catch students who might not have supportive interventions in place. They run risk reports that flag kids for attendance and grades and then put plans together to address those, to address those students. And then lastly, we heard from Ben Berger, who is the principal at Central High School, and Nate Kepler, the assistant principal at Central High School's Uli office. And they provided an overview of how a large school with a thousand three hundred and twenty-nine students uses school-wide data monitoring and wing office monitoring to personalize the educational experience for students. The wing offices use a system of tier-one, tier-two and tier-three monitoring. This monitoring process helps to identify which students need universal supports. Each tier has various intentional and personalized levels of monitoring and support based on the students' needs. So basically, a school within a school is how they view their wing offices. We, they, the two of them kind of dug into an example of monitoring kids with an F. And that's, again, F as in failing. But they they have weekly wing office meetings looking at those kids that have Fs. Then look at kind of the tally and trends, look at attendance to try to figure out how they can set supports in place to address and and get those kids back back to where they need to be. So that was really great, and I would encourage anybody to go. There was a lot more specific, specific examples given of of at the different levels. So that was a really great learning series. And then we moved into celebrations and successes. So Ms. Houghton and Mr. Tyworth shared a few of the following successes. So Willow Hill had a data meeting collaboration that was shared. Central Grade School and is it, pronounce his name, the Assistant Principal Conason?
Jim Conestive.
Okay, he is the assistant principal and he has a therapy dog named Henry. And he shared his riding his bike to school on walk and roll the school day. And again, talked about how Henry works with the students several days a week there at Central Grade School. So pretty cool. There was a reading league conference. They shared where staff attended the conference in North Carolina as part of the science of reading and part of the new ELA curriculum, CKLA adoption, train the trainer. Again, Dr. Van Wagner already touched on the Patriot game. That was just a celebration across our whole district and so many highlights there on 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 both sides. East Middle School and West Senior High School had their instructional rounds. I believe it was on October seventeenth, West Senior High hosted. Then at Central High School, the security team and special education staff were highlighted. And at West Middle School, EL teacher Tanya Donahue taking her students to a field trip to the Botanical Garden. So just some great celebrations around the district, across the district. And then our meeting was adjourned at nine-thirty and our next board curriculum meeting will be December third at eight-thirty.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Reporting out on Board Finance and Operations, Andrew Oment.
All right, Board Finance and Operations Committee met on Thursday, October thirty-first at eight-fifteen. Thank you to Trustee Moonmore for sitting in. We called the meeting to order at eight-fifteen. We kept the prior meeting committee, meeting minutes as posted and then moved right into bid services and purchases. The first item, which is on this evening's consent agenda, came from district reunification drill that we did over the summer. So during that drill, they kind of realized that the older VHF analog system for portable radios wasn't as reliable as it could be. And so we are replacing those with a digital system. This will enhance the coverage and audio quality and will also encrypt transmission data. So this is a purchase from Grand Traverse Mobile Communications. And it is for an amount not to exceed a hundred and seventy-one thousand six hundred and ninety-five dollars. That's funded from capital bond funds and it's on this evening's consent agenda. That was the only purchase that we had for the committee. So we then moved on to our capital project updates. Just a standard update, still the Center for Innovation in Manufacturing at both high schools, the Save and Print Shop and a GSRP room at one of the elementary schools. So I believe the Center for Manufacturing Innovation should be done for second semester. So hopefully, the students will get in there for, for fingers crossed, but hopefully.
They're working hard. I mean, they're all.
Hopefully by robotics season maybe.
Yeah, oh, yeah. I mean, they're, they're doing great. It's just.
Yep.
Got to keep you headed that way.
Yep. And then we moved into discussion on the bond sale authorization, which is a discussion item for this evening. So I won't go into too much detail on that. And then our other item that we had this evening was also discussed at the committee level. So just the audit results that Mr. Nielsen shared with us earlier. And then the item that we added to the agenda announcing the grant for the other portion of the electric school bus. And again, that's a discussion item, so we will discuss that then. The quick meeting, we adjourned at eight-forty and our next meeting is December fifth at eight-fifteen.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? I will do the executive committee report out. We moved our meeting from the usual afternoon spot being Halloween. And we called the meeting to order nine-eighteen. Skipping some of the procedural items, we did approve, while we put on the consent calendar, a conference that Superintendent Van Wagner is planning to attend on March sixth through eighth. We're required to approve any out-of-state conferences, but that's part of his contract for that particular item. The, we reviewed the agenda. We went through some staffing update and I think previously we were fully staffed. And we had some challenges. This time we've got some unexpected media retirements. So we have kind of summarized a large section, but we we have needs in special education, elementary teaching, teacher consulting, and also additional roles in junior kindergarten assistants, security liaison, cook's assistant, guest teacher positions and lead coaching. So and we obviously have the standard ones that we're always in need of, extended day noon duty, GSRP aides, ELL Aides. We have an Indigenous Education Assistant and a bus driver and aid positions as well. So it sounds like a lot. I think we're in. I don't think it's much worse than where we were, but it's, the list is a little longer this month for sure. So we do have another open interview at November twentieth from three to five. Policy updates, it's on, well, we obviously have moved a part of the process. We have to have a public hearing of anti-bullying, which is on the agenda today. So I'll just defer any conversation until we get to that point. Some communications update, we did have a pop-up shop for the Student Support Network, who does fantastic work. We had a hundred and forty-seven TCAP students receive essential winter gear, including coats, snow pants, boots, hats, gloves and socks and hygiene products. And was continuing to fulfill requests from students who weren't unable to attend. So that's a lot of kids who may not have had winter clothing that they now do. So that's an amazing effort. Safety Week, we we observe Safety Week from October twenty-first to the twenty-fifth. There was some social media and featured on the Hi-Fi Friday as well. Operating Millage, thank you to the community for the support in renewing that millage. That comes from non-homestead properties and goes to fund. If we don't have that eighteen mills, then we do not get our full foundation allowance from the state. So critical and thank you again for the support. I think that would be, I'll leave anything else of that section. I think we're all happy that regardless, happy that the election is over. So and then Dr. Van Wagner did. We were, well, I'd said the school bus grant, but I'm going to leave that because that is also a agenda item as well. So we adjourned at nine forty-one. Any questions? Board Office Hours. You asking a question or did you say no?
You're skipping MASB Annual Leadership.
Oh, thank you. And then, so we do have the MASB Annual Leadership, both trustees Banjo and Pacquinn tenants. Obviously, Josie is not here today. I will just add before handing the mic to Beth, thank you for Josie. She presented at the school board conference on our cell phone policy, which is now becoming a very big issue around the state. And the legislation seems to mirror a little bit what we did as well. So good work ahead of time and and thanks, Josie, for presenting. But other than that, Beth?
Yeah, it was interesting. I attended the presentation that Josie was a part of with two other school districts. And it was very well attended and a lot of back and forth from the audience. So it was like a discussion, not just a presentation. And I think it went really, really well. I think some of the best discussion I've seen at MASB was done in that particular session. So that, I think, is commendable. And they touched on a lot of the issues, of course, that we already discussed, including that teachers don't want to be policemen, but they'd sort of like to have that not as an issue in the classroom. So that went very well. I completed my one hundred series and I thought about you, trustee Humphries, because I think you completed the one hundred series classes at MASB. Didn't you like the first year or something that you were trustee? Took me two years. But they were interesting. One of the best classes that I went to was on strategic plan. I'm glad I took that because it's preliminary for what happens, I believe, next year. And then I attended the attorney session, which I thought was interesting. I was there in particular to hear what they had to say about church and state. And no surprises there. I won't go into that. And then, secondly, I wanted to hear what they had to say about Title IX. Title Nine. And again, they didn't seem to think it was as major of an issue as I think some people have concerns about, you know, coming from the feds. And now with the change at the federal level, it may be even less of an issue. I don't know. I mean, we can toss a coin on that one. MASB, the Annual Leadership Conference is going to be at the resort next year. And I want a free member attendant thing-
Registration.
Registration. So hopefully, you know, y'all will be able to come.
Every dollar counts, the savings on the budget. So we get that one updated.
Thank you.
Thank you for attending. I was hoping to attend, but my schedule was not allowing. I had a 50/50 chance of being able to, but it didn't go. So, thank you for attending.
I'd like to add one more thing in light of our school bus later on in the thing. I talked to Dean Transportation and they run school buses at different places, I guess, around the state, correct? I don't know how broad they're distributed. And I asked them how many electric school buses they had. And I believe that they too were using government funds to help purchase those buses. And they said they had seven. And they use them in urban areas and they're very limited into urban areas, simply because, you know, you're loading a bus and you've got winter weather and you just are very hesitant to send that bus with kids very far. So I just thought I would share that, that was where they were on the practicality of it.
All right. Any questions on the MASB? I look forward to it being at the resort next year. Board office hours, dare I ask?
I did. I had four community members.
Don't take offense.
I know. I had great conversations. One was there just to say thank you to the school board. And the three others gave, we had some really good conversations, some good feedback of maybe some things we can do better. Really appreciated the open dialogue. And just on that note, last meeting, when you were giving your report out, we sort of talked on our way out that maybe as a board, maybe come January, we might discuss how our office hours could be a little bit different. Like maybe we could, instead of, you know, we talked about Horizon might be hard for people to get to and parking might be tough. And so maybe we do virtual every other month or something like that. So that might be something anyone listening wants to get the board feedback if they think that's a good idea or a bad idea.
I don't know if it's your, whoever said it, but like having it before board meetings may be convenient too.
Yeah, or before board meetings. That's a great idea. So I know Horizon can be a little challenging sometimes just to park for people that want to come in and just share a couple things. So just some things to think about, but really appreciated the four for being there, so.
I think we should do it at Myers. You should meet everyone at Myers.
Then, all right, so that's a good turnout. So that's the next board office hours is November 21st. Trustee Ballinger will be in attendance. It's at Horizon Books in the upper level from 6 to 7 p.m. And that doesn't, no, that's men's and women's, that's in December, right? Remember that was the last time I did it? That was just, it was, I felt like it was like I walked in and I was like, yes, look at this. Everyone's here to see me and no one was very interested.
Yes. I think that happened to me a couple years ago. Yeah.
Okay, moving on to consent. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
I move that the Board of Education approve the consent calendar as presented and without discussion.
Your second.
All right. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Next agenda item, as required, we recently updated our handbook to trune policies. One of the policies is anti-bullying and does require a public hearing. I will declare this public hearing open to the public and defer to Dr. Van Wagner.
So again, this is the policy, it's essentially exactly the same as, we put quite a bit of time into it a few years ago, you may remember, really looking at that, tailoring it to our district. And we had asked Connie and our whole team took a look. It's almost word for word from the Niola policy, but with the trune update from that, but only very slight difference of words. But the main edits and those things that were made by the board were included in this revision that's before you tonight.
Connie, anything else to add to that?
Yeah.
All right. At this time, the board would like to invite any comments from the community. Anyone wishing to make a comment on the anti-bullying policy? All right. Hearing no comments, I declare this pub- oh, I just, I looked up and I didn't see you up there, sir. That's fine. And you know this one is specific to anti-bullying?
Well, pretty much everything I share is related. I looked online, I read through the current system, anti-bullying, and I found one Pine River area, I believe it's the same trune, because they're in the address. And there's one little line in it that says, "The responsible school official may arrange for teachers to address these same issues within the classroom curriculum." And around the country, different teachers can use this to basically promote everything LGBT. So I hope that doesn't happen. Otherwise, to me, they looked about similar, switching from one to the other. And with that Josie, when she shared the other day-
I'd like to remind you to stay on topic on our open-
I believe it is on this. It was about gay-straight alliances, which is on-
This is about bullying.
What was shared was that we have gay-straight alliances, which there, they're promoting anti-bullying for sure, which is a good thing. There shouldn't be bullying. But, and she says we have gay-straight alliances in TC West, high school and middle school, and likewise in Central. And it's just, that's the way things are. Well, here's, this is an article. It's an anti-bully bill. And this was way back in 2010 from Mass Resistance, Massachusetts kind of leading in this. And a lot of the anti-bullying stuff is basically to promote the homosexual issue. And they say at the center of this bill, it's all about anti-bully bill, okay? At the center of this bill is Glisten. And that's what we have in our clubs in the high schools and middle schools. The Gay-Straight Education Network, Glisten, is an aggressive and militant homosexual national activist group which targets children in the public schools. Glisten's goal is to normalize homosexual behavior to schoolchildren, often in a very graphic manner. They had one article, oh yeah, it's right here. Here in Massachusetts, they were involved in Fiscate and the Little Black Book and other horrible events. Use your imagination and you can look it up. They organize homosexual gay-straight alliance clubs, which we have here now, in high schools and middle schools across the country and in Traverse City. Glisten is behind the recent push across the country. I'm out of time.
Thank you. Your time's up.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing no comments, I declare this public hearing closed. And then we will move on to the next, which is a discussion item, which is the board policy for anti-bullying. So with that, we will move into board discussion. Do I have any questions? I think there was obviously a lot of work that was done originally, so I'm happy that that was retained. And I think it's come, we've used it a number of times. So I appreciate the work that the board did on it before and thanks for making sure that was included. That was my comments, if anyone else has any others.
I move that the Board of Education repeal Niola board policy 5517.01, anti-bullying and adopt trune board policy 5207, anti-bullying as presented.
Second.
All right. Stacy, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Moon Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Byrd?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Trustee Newman-Bale?
Yes. Motion carries. Just before we move on to school safety update, on the future reference, Stacy, if you can remind me to check, is it still board policy 0167.3?
For which one?
For the-
Public comment.
For public comment?
Yeah, okay, I'll check.
And I'll probably say 0167.3 for several months. I will at least try and have it right. So, I'll forget until it's the next meeting. So, moving on, school safety update, defer to Dr. Wagner.
Yeah, so always lots of things going on, but one highlight for you, just want to share with the board and our community a little bit more about the radios that were talked about in consent as considered during that consent portion of the agenda. TCAP's is upgrading its two-way radio communication system. This will replace portable radios for key crisis team leaders, building administrators in schools, district-wide. The current radio system uses an older analog, very high-frequency VHF range that restricts coverage areas in and around school, making it difficult to hear and transmit messages in a clear and timely manner with a limited coverage area. The upgrade will switch the current VHF analog system to a digital system, which will improve coverage and audio quality while encrypting the transmission data. That's one key component to let you know. In addition, the purchase includes 800 megahertz digital radios for district-wide administrators and the key crisis team leaders. In the event of emergency, district administrators will be able to speak with the TCAP's crisis team leaders directly with no delay wherever they are throughout the county. So, again, a purchase that we've had very, very old technology really with that. This puts us to be able to be in line with all of our other emergency responders as well. And so definitely something that, through our practice, which we're continuing to find things as we go through. We want to make sure that, you know, we are ready. We hope to God we don't have to. But in situations of either you act to God, a tornado, anything like that, you know, we need to be able to communicate and this is an important step.
May I ask a question? What are we going to do with the old radios?
We turn them in and they give us credit for them.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Then we'll move on to item C, discussion of a board authorizing resolution, deferring to Dr. Oment.
Yeah, so this is the authorization resolution. The board given permission to Dr. Van Wagner or myself to actually follow through with all of the proceedings to sell bonds. Right now, we are anticipating a February date to sell bonds and close sometime in March, early March. We've been talking about the distribution. It's 10 million from the 2018 bond, which will exhaust that bond, and 80 million from first bond. Again, we would be selling them in a 10-year series, pretty similar in a competitive bid that we've done in the past.
What date was the first bond?
I'm sorry?
What date was the first bond?
The, that's the 2018 series.
Okay.
The last of the 2018 vote.
Gotcha.
And the first of the 2019.
Gotcha. I will note, just so that you're aware, in the first preliminary projections that were done by our financial advisor, if you take a look, they're pretty conservative on our property value increases and we've been seeing a little bit higher than they've predicted. But we watched the schedule to see when we might actually need to go out for another authorization without our millage rate dropping. And right now, we're anticipating that it would drop below 3.1 if we didn't have a new authorization by 2032. So, we pay attention to that. I expect once they put in the actual parameters from this bond, that it might actually be sooner than that. So it's something we pay attention to when we're looking at planning for the future.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, a motion?
I move that the Board of Education adopt the bond authorizing resolution as presented.
My second.
All right. Stacy, please conduct a roll call vote. I don't think-
What?
No, just have it.
Roll call. Yeah. Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Trustee Byrd?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Moon Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Newman-Bale?
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on to what is, sorry, what are the notes? Yep. D, school bus, deferring to Dr. Wagner.
Okay, so you have, I'm all in front of you, as I had talked about in our finance committee, there was a chance we would need to do this and we do feel like today, we were working with some things of extension and different things, but we really felt like to be safe that we needed to put this through today. So again, as a district, we applied first for an EPA clean bus rebate of $200,000, which we were awarded earlier this year. And then very recently, we were sent a letter that we have been awarded under Section 74B of the Michigan Clean Bus Energy Grant, $280,000 as well. Allows us to be able to purchase and pilot electric buses at no cost to the district. And it also, we're working on including the charger and all that. Could be close in far as cost with that, but working through that as well. But this would be that total cost for one EV conventional 77-passenger electric bus, with the total that to exceed $449,312, which includes a 15% contingency. And again, funding for the project comes from those two grants. The district is currently getting quotes for installation and the two-way radios. Should costs exceed those thresholds, it'll be brought back to the board for approval.
Okay.
77 passengers, is that-
Typical.
That's three to a seat. I mean, that's what it's rated for. That's not how we plan for our buses, but it's a little bit easier on the elementary side, but it's still not great.
The, and because we are thought ahead, you guys thought ahead, the bus garage area is already wired for-
It's not wired.
The conduit.
It's ready.
The conduit, so it's-
Yeah. We'll have to add a small transformer. They think installation will be between 10 and 20,000.
We use the ground funds for that too?
I believe so. Right now, it's not in the grant specifically, so we have to amend it.
The, so the two grants total $480,000 between the two of them. Would any of that cover, do we have to have maintenance, education, or do they have to get like any special-
That really comes with the purchase of the bus, training of our technicians, warranties, all that comes as part of the cost of the bus.
Okay. I was just wondering.
And this is through Hoax Row, which is our normal supplier that we've often, you know, through bid, through my school, the Michigan School Bus, MSBO Bus Program and others bought. So we have a good relationship with them on that.
So, I mean, we would have some money left in the grant, right? At the amount we're authorizing potentially.
We don't think a lot, but we'll see.
So like, we couldn't go back, any of the infrastructure that we already did at the wash station?
No, because it wouldn't have been in the application. Right now, installation's not even in there, so, yeah. We actually put 15% contingency because I think that would cover the quote for the radios and the actual charging station. So it would just be the 10 to 20 hanging out there for installation to actually get an electric ship come out, add the transformer and connect it.
That's a third defroster fan for you if you didn't. I like that, it's an option.
And what's the anticipated use of the bus?
You know, again, we're going to pilot. So, you know, my thoughts are we're going to see it a lot in town, you know, with a field trip or some of those kind of things. And, you know, quite honestly, we're going to learn. You know, we're going to use it and learn when, you know, the conditions are right or issues or those things. So it's a no-cost-to-the-district opportunity to do that and learn. And we'll be able to check the technology and I only expect it to improve from here. So it's a no-cost-to-the-district opportunity to do that and learn and we'll be able to check the technology and I only expect it to improve from here. But it gets us in that, in that ballgame and understanding and learning from it.
Considering that your question, or your conversation with Dean, only seven electric school buses in the state of Michigan? It'll be.
No, that's just Dean. To give you an example, Jackson, I know, I think has 27 in their fleet. But they're a very short square mile of what they travel. You know, and so to be able to, you know, charge them in a station real close and all that. So our geography is gonna challenge us with new technologies for a long time. But it gives us an opportunity in our shorter routes and those kind of things here in town to start and learn.
Two questions. How much is a gas school bus run?
I think it was 197 last time we went out.
197, so well over twice.
Yep.
The amount. Secondly, how much does a normal school bus get run in the course of a week? Every day?
Majority of them every day. I think we've got about 85 buses now and they probably have 35 that are going every day. On routes and then we have the spares and then trip buses. So probably more than 35 every day are going out twice a day.
So basically, we have a rubric to compare this bus to.
We do, and a rotation of when we buy our buses, mileage, all that.
Because.
Yeah, we'll have some good data to learn from.
And I'd very much appreciate hearing that maybe in a year. Because my feeling is there's no such thing as a free bus. And it means somebody is gonna pay for it. Proportionally, we're gonna pay a portion of it. And the bus comes at a substantial greater cost. And so to see how well it functions, given how our van is now being a maintenance van, as opposed to what we intended with it. And that, those are the caveats I have. I have a real hesitation.
I know you do, and we'll collect data.
I know you do.
And we'll also give you a ride when we get a chance, Beth.
I don't know if I need a ride, you know? I don't know if I have enough fire protection.
I think it's just exciting that we're lessening our footprint, even so small. But I think our groups, our student groups on both sides of town, sustainability groups will be happy to hear this good news.
Question, how much does a school bus cost to fill up with gas, like on, from empty to full?
Ooh, I'd have to, I'd have to dig into it.
And then what's the cost of electricity?
Yeah. I'd have to go back and look.
And those are all things we're gonna learn.
Yeah, because I'd really like to see a very apolitical hardcore economic look at that bus.
And there are a lot of schools that, you know, because some of them smaller areas have bought quite a few. So I know Ypsilanti has a large amount, so we'll see what that looks like.
We can definitely use them every day for our career tech shuttles at noon. I mean, we've got some specific in-town things that we can use them for.
Yeah, I think regardless, we'll be buying, it's one less bus we will have to buy, so it does save us a.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And not to bring it back to common sense, but you know, when you use fossil fuels, you're substantially polluting our environment versus electricity where we can do renewables through cherry land.
But mining, the batteries and all that kind of thing also.
Which I think is probably a debate we're not going to get to, but from a, from a board, I think we can agree that we're, a free bus is. Yeah, we're not expanding our policy and I think even the memorandum included language about given, given the uncertainty about how electric bus will perform in our climate. So I think we've covered all bases on that.
So I move that the Board of Education authorize the district to purchase one EV conventional 77-passenger electric bus in the amount not to exceed 449,312, which will be funded by the section 74B Clean Bus Energy Grant and the EPA Clean School Bus rebate.
Second.
You forgot the 15% contingency.
Yeah.
And I think.
Well, I mean, the 449,000 includes the 15% contingency.
Okay, okay, okay.
We authorize.
Okay, sorry, sorry for interrupt.
Usually we did say it, but.
Okay. You get the bell.
Second.
Yeah. Erica's got it now, I don't know. Stacy, please, oh, any other discussion? Stacy, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Moon Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Byrd?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
You're throwing me in the curb here, you know?
No.
But I'll tell you, I'll hold you to the data.
And Trustee Newman Bale?
Yes, so motion carries. Okay, moving on to the next agenda item, which is item E, I think, yep, Central High School Gym renovation, I think is probably the word. It's a complicated where it's gonna go.
It's Central High School Bond, so we have, you might remember in the bond, we have a new office secure vestibule area that we're standardizing across all of our, our, our school buildings. Also included was ADA and gym renovations with that, as well as wrestling room. You may remember, we had a lot of feedback and talked with that, all of that. So have had lots of different conversations already with a key focus group at Central High School about the gym and what we're gonna do with that. And so we've had the chance, we had an RFP that was put out for architecture and engineering with that. And so we asked Scott, Christine, I asked Scott to sit in on that and we, at this point, we're making a recommendation to hire TMP Architecture for that work. It would include, again, that main office, safe and secure entryway, working with the gyms and wrestling room. In addition, something that we've talked a lot about doing and, and board members have asked questions. We would also like them to be able, I'd like to be able to work with them to, and have the board approved, move forward for renderings of a turf gym space, a multi-purpose space that we could begin taking a look at. I'd like to sit with them and look at a couple of designs and thoughts with that and I'm asking the board to authorize me to be able to do that. And so they would, TMP would have all of the work over at Central High School with that. And, and so we're really excited. They brought a great team in, I thought, with the interviews and I think that they're also gonna work with some local architecture folks as well that know that building right from its beginnings.
Their company designed the original, but we won't hold that against them. We joked about that.
Designed their original.
Yeah, they have the original, so it's, it's their, their partner in its.
Cornwall.
Cornwall has the original prints to Central High School and their offices.
I always thought it was a California group that designed with the X-tier entrance.
So they know the building well, they've been in and out of it, you know, all that. So we're really excited that they want to partner with them and they brought them to the presentation. So I think we have the expertise of a large firm that has done a lot of work with, for instance, pre-engineered buildings and that and, and across the state with schools, as well as that hometown flavor that knows our buildings and that. We were just really, really excited with the presentation and knowledge. And so with that, I'm asking for that. And then, which may be a separate as well component, and, and I'll let Scott maybe, you know, expand on our conversation with it, is that in, in this motion or maybe a separate motion, we've had a lot of discussion about fundraising. And a lot of people are constantly asking me, and so at this point, I would like for us to consider, I'd like for the board to give me permission to work with Scott to form a campaign committee for a fundraiser to look at some multi-purpose facilities at both Central and West High School moving forward. There's a lot to that, but this gives us the opportunity to begin that conversation with our community that I know a lot of you have had people ask. And now that we have a lot over as far as elections and bonds and, and operating villages and all that, it's something I'm feeling I have the capacity to start looking at and working with local, including legislators and others looking at for funds. You know, utilizing what we can from a district, but, you know, that, that's a piece of this as well. So again, the key part is I have some language there for a motion for hiring TMP Architecture. And, and then there's that second piece that I'll let you decide how you may want to talk through that.
Yeah, no, I, obviously, because it was a late addition, any discussion? We talked about adding it, I agree with the TMP side and I think that's the easier part of the equation. There's obviously been multiple mentions over the years about field houses or multi-purpose facilities and all sorts of different things. We've got central grade. It's got to the point where I think there's so many pieces to the puzzle, I don't know. We, we've got to dissect them and we've got to have at least a public acknowledge, we've had plenty of them. But we've got the previous bond, which we have $10 million outstanding. The only thing left, I think, on that bond that we haven't done yet is an indoor facility that was named on that. We've got, and really, this is coming up so hard is because we've got a couple of things. One is fundraisers, which, and that we need to address. And then two is we've got serious issues on the Central High Gym that we do have in the current budget. And I don't think that we're suggesting using funds for the budget for field houses, but at the same time, if we did the field houses now, we could potentially save a lot of things in, off of that budget, reducing that budget by doing it within the, within the multi-purpose facility now. So there's, there's definitely a lot of moving pieces that we need to break down. And I think a big part of it for me was, you know, TMP, having TMP and that's kind of a big focus on them is athletic side. I think that's actually all they do.
No, they're full K-12.
Yeah, they do building schools, I mean, they do a lot. They are a very, very strong grima crust, all that, so. But they have built some of these pre-engineered buildings as well. And again, we'll continue to work with some focus groups at Central High School. That is, you know, the main focus with it of what we have. We have a very, very old gym facility. We've had some initial conversations with many of our, our retired staff and athletic directors at Central. For instance, I, you know, had the chance to have a focus group with John Sonneman and John Lober, some longtime coaches, our athletic director, all of our, our girls volleyball, boys basketball, girls basketball coaches, all together and talked about the realities of the aging facility and the ADA issues that are, the minute we touch it. We know we have bleachers at this point, a floor that no longer has the sand and all of it is below grade. You know, we have locker rooms that are kind of dungeon-esque, you know, down in the bottom. And, and so we want to work with TMP to really look at utilizing the dollars in the most frugal way that we can, but provide the most space and opportunity for our kids. It was interesting in my conversation with the focus group of, of really our, our key leaders within our former staff, retired and current, is the one thing that kept coming across is when that, when that facility was built at Central High School, Title IX was never really thought of. If you think of the amount of sports that we have now even been added from that. You have one less gym at Central High School than you do West High School. You have a gym that is not even capable of, of holding a game because the wall goes up to the line. And so that would allow us to do some things to renovate that area, looking at wrestling and fitness and making sure they have at least comparable areas to West High School. So this is the opportunity for us now to move forward and a part of this bond and TMP is the group we feel strong can really help us and lead us and do it in the most fiscally responsible, but yet quality and providing the most space that we can for our kids.
Can I ask a question? Would you limit it only to athletics?
No. So I think it's important for robotics to be able to use a facility.
Robotics?
I think it's important for lots of different activities to band. Definitely to be able to use a facility, you know, in that element. I could see, you know, there's lots of, you know, we would love to see some, you know, youth programming that could be done there in the summer even. You know, I know the Y is always looking for space as well and things, so that's why it's important, I think, for all, you know, a lot of us to make it a multi-purpose facility, everything we can. You know, with whatever design that means and can, but the most usage we can get out of these facilities for our kids and families and community, the better off we are utilizing our tax dollars that we've been given.
I agree, and I think that some skills would be useful in a facility like that.
Yep.
As well, some real serious practical.
And eventually, you know, if we could raise the funds, you know, I think that we have a very much a running community. So as their ability for us to look at, you know, to work with them and look at, you know, some track area, probably won't be a seven, eight lane Olympic, you know, but something that could be some indoor space for the winter time for, you know, for seniors possibly to walk, for a lot of our runners, TC Track Club. You know, we are very much that community, so, but we have a challenge ahead of us. It will take a fun, a large effort to try and raise the funds to be able to do this. I just, I want to, I don't want to over, you know, have people think that, that this is done and the district has all the funds. It is gonna take a monumental effort of fundraising from the community, including trying to get legislative funding possibly. Frank and Muth, when they did this, this past year in June, got $10 million from the state legislature.
Which won't even buy him much of a school bus.
Had to go there, didn't. But, you know, that's, that's what we want to look at, TMP, and look what, what's, what we can maximize, what's engineered buildings, those kind of things. See what we can do and talk to the community and go out and see what fundraising might be out there. You know, for our resources, what we can do is very small and I talked about, you know, like a turf gym. You know, but if the community that many have come to you and me and others want to look at maybe the, you know, the, some, some resources that are philanthropic and others and, and, you know, possibly large gifts for, you know, people that are looking to help kids and do those things. We are going to want to engage them and have that conversation. And so that's why it's important for me that the board give me an authority to work with Scott to form a, a fundraising team to begin and look at that capital project of fundraising to try and do.
And I was thinking you could even ask orthopedics to see if they would be able to put a small clinic.
We've actually already talked, I had the chance when we met with Munson, we actually talked with the Munson Orthopedic Doctors and team and they would be excited, I think, to be a part of that. So Dr. Van Wagner, no relation, it's an O different in it, but he's a Central grad and he's an orthopedic surgeon with the Munson Orthopedic Institute. He had a lot of interest in that conversation with the Munson team as well.
Well, and the amount of revenue this could also generate if we build these field houses for tournaments to come.
We had the chance, we, you know, we were given an opportunity to get a funding study done of looking at revenues expenditures. If we were to raise the money for these, we, we show that both would be revenue positive and that could help our athletics department. And, you know, help because, you know, one of the things, when we know budgets are gonna be tightened. And so the less that we can do of pay-to-play, we're one of the few districts that have pay-to-play. You saw our revenues tonight of the realities of where we're at compared to other districts in the state. So if those are opportunities to generate some revenue for them to maybe starve out, you know, stop some of those costs or, you know, future things of burden not be able to provide our kids or, again, putting out especially our kids that come from low income. There are ways that we can mitigate that or remove through some revenue things that we could do through facilities that the community will help support. You know, I think at this point, the board has charged me with having those conversations. At this point, I'm ready to try and move forward to try and make that happen.
Yeah, and there is a couple, and that one, I, the motion we're gonna be approving today is just dollars for basically the groundwork. It's not, we're not approving any facilities.
This is just TMP and design with all the central facilities and, and thoughts of that, we'll come up with some different, from small to larger, you know, and, and definitely what you could raise. So we have some options there. We know we have some folks that would be interested in helping with even the small and others that are looking for more larger and they're, you know, for some of their resources, such as to be able to host a tournament or something like that more. And we, we alone would not have the resources for that, but maybe the community is willing to come forward and philanthropic and see what we can provide our children for this type of facility that many downstate have. All of any of you that have had kids that are in different activities downstate, we know in the metro Grand Rapids area, metro Detroit, Saginaw, all have these types of, of facilities and we don't have anything like that up here. And so this is an opportunity to see if our community, through philanthropic support and fundraising, from the $20 to the $1 million will, will help to consider trying to do something like this.
And just before we have, go ahead.
Is there a contract amount or is there an amount not to exceed or is?
No, with architects will approve the overall percentage that they would get paid based on the construction cost or individual fees based on principle or design.
Okay, and that's just, that's outlined in the contract?
Yes.
And I'd just like to say that, you know, we've been having these conversations over the past couple of years. So I do think it's a, a, a great idea to move forward and let the community know. I mean, so many people have asked me about where the conversation has landed and they have sort of felt like the board and TCAPS has kind of shoved it to the side. You know, I think with the bond, you know, that, that we didn't put it as a bond item, right? Because we weren't sure.
In the 2024, correct?
Yeah, because we weren't sure. And so I do think it's really important to bring this conversation back to the table and, and to, you know, figure out what we can and can't do. And if it, you know, if it does, does just end up being, you know, what we need to do on, you know, the Central High School remodel, you want to call it, then, you know, that's great, but I, I think that there's a lot of community members that are willing, hopefully, to step forward and, and let's see what we can do. And, and I think it'd be great, both sides of town.
And I think we'd have the resources to do too small, you know, and when I say small, like a gym, you know? But beyond that. And I think we'd have the resources to do too small, you know, and when I say small, like a gym, you know, but beyond that, we wouldn't. And so if people have dreams of those kind of things that you see downstate, we're going to need some real financial support from our community and philanthropic. And those people that wanna see those kind of great things in our community for kids, and have people when they consider coming here, when an orthopedic surgeon. Looking for their family, do we have the same facilities that a Grand Rapids or a Metro Detroit or an Ann Arbor has? And so hopefully, we have people that wanna come to the table and help, and we're gonna put together a, a good campaign and process. And bring all the people that we think are right to the table that wanna try and help with that.
And even just looking at the pro forma that was sent over to the board, I mean, the, the ROI from a community standpoint. You know, my kids, we traveled lots of different tournaments, and Traverse City is desirable, and so families want to come here for tournaments. Because it is such a beautiful place, and so what a great way for us to profit off of that, right, to, and to, you know, for our kids.
And, and that's great, but you know, to me more importantly is, you know, finding something for our kids here in this community, that is far more, you know, the, the, the goal. And you know, if we can try and do something at each campus, this is used, you know, our strength and conditioning, our fitness classes. We have eight hundred kids at each high school running seven hours a day in a packed facility, and they're running in hallways. You know, I get emails from teachers at, at West High School that, you know, it's so loud, and they're trying to grant papers right after school, but there's a hundred and ten kids. Running through the hallway.
Galloping.
Right, you know, and so, again, like I said, this is an opportunity for us to open it up, as many people have asked, and so. Let's see what happens.
And I did just wanna add, cuz just to have a very open discussion of it is, I've heard from. Multiple board members directly with, yeah, we've got the train pot, which we've talked about using for further construction, but we also need to be wary about budget cuts. And maybe needing that for the operating fund, we've got this ten million dollars, we've got the bond fund. Every single one of us, I'm sure, has different opinions on each little item, and I'm not suggesting today is the day for that, but. I at least wanted to have this discussion as well, and the fact that we are talking about, we kind of approached it, the fact that. If we're gonna have to do this gym, if we can do some things within a, within a separate building that can reduce the budget on this gym, maybe we can put some money towards that. And potentially a facility, let's try and do some of the math after we get this TMP stuff to say. This is what we can do within our budget, and it's not gonna be what, you know, it's not gonna be the grandiose. It's not even gonna be the medium grandiose.
But, again, with the power of our community, let's see what they'll come up with.
But it at least gives us the, the starting point of, this is what we can do.
And it gives us the financial, you know, the, the true numbers of exactly what it would be, and so. That's where we'll take it up to a point to actually get those drawings, everything done, what would the, you know, what would bids be, what would that cost be, so we know. And then, you know, we'll know a number, and we'll see where the community wants to support, and, and, but we'll put that word out with, you know, such as the board making this declaration, and. And again, you know, I, in a separate, I think, motion, I would like the board to publicly, you know, give me and, and Scott. The authority to move forward, you know, to begin that capital campaign, once we have these numbers, you know, to budget numbers to move up.
Can I also ask, we look at, you know, maintaining it over time, not just the building.
I think that's a very important part, you know, that we have, you know, something built in to be able to have a fund that, you know, that, again, one of the key components that, as I've. We've had these conversations for years is, this cannot, anything we do be a draw on the, you know, the general operating, you know, funds that we have. And for, you know, especially as we go into, but it's gotta be something sustained, preferably, the numbers show that it will. You know, produce enough funds to sustain itself with staffing and everything, plus some. But, you know, those are all the things we're gonna work out and bring those clear numbers to the board and community, and go from there.
Yeah, I think it's gonna get to the point of a larger conversation, but there's so, out of all the, like, things I think I've done since I've been on the school board. This has so many moving pieces of different things, so. Most importantly, we do have to have discussions with fundraising, even immediately fundraising, but really on the political side as well, just asking our.
Yep, state legislators.
To support, there may be opportunities coming sooner than we think, so. Just, just.
As well as philanthropic, community foundation, others, you know, within that, our business communities of support, Traverse Connect. Traverse State Tourism, all the partners that we can to come to the table and sit and talk about, you know, what this looks like, and that, all those things like Bess said, that. Future support is somehow built into a fund, you know, and those kind of things.
And practical skills, bringing about a little bit more in the, the high schools.
So I do, I, I agree, I think we should, just for clear delineation, have two separate motions here, so, quick question on the turf rendering. Part of this proposed motion, is that, does that need to be part of this, or?
It, it's all together, and we have a turf gym, you know, in there right now, as far as those design, and we'll kind of, there'll be varying levels that we speak with TMP. About design and look with that, but the motion you have at this point would allow us to be able to incorporate that within, you know, the design work and on paper. You know, of what that would look like with the, the central gym, and you know, to be, idea of whatever we come up with there, the thought would be, you know, for that, that one piece. A carbon copy at West High School, you know, eventually, that's, that's the, the thought.
So I'll take a stab at this first part, so I moved that the Board of Education recommend the approval of a contract to TMP Architecture. For the design of the Central High School renovations, including the main office, safe and secure entryways. Gyms, including the potential renderings for a turf gym and the wrestling room.
Erica got it there, but, yes, thank you, I think we'll just, first, first try, so, any other discussion? All right, Stacy, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
Trustee Bird?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Trustee Newman Bell?
Yes, motion carries.
And then I think we wanna do a second.
Yep.
I took the easiest one.
Ah, let's see, I moved that the Board of Education. Have Dr. Van Wagner and Scott Newman-Bell move forward with discussions on a capital campaign. Regarding a.
Multi-purpose.
Multi-purpose facility, turf gym facility.
Second. Second there, I don't know, I didn't hear what the comment was, but I second on here, any other discussion? All right, Stacy, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Bird?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Trustee Newman-Bell?
Yes. Motion carries. All right, moving on.
If I could do one last thing to, to just inform the board, and this is more informational, kind of with the bond. One of the things we've been working towards is, we know that Central Grade, when we get to that point in the fall of twenty twenty-six, correct? Is when the plan is to make that move for Central Grade to move into here, so that we can begin the construction component of that. You know, lots of planning and stuff is gonna be before then, we'll put our first focus groups of constituents of the Central Grade School and neighborhood together. This early winter, right after the new year, so the planning process will begin and all that, but it's gonna take quite a while. Again, we've got an RFP and things out right now for architects that has been, I believe we received them.
We received them today.
Received all the RFPs for architects for that, so I just wanna let that Central Grade community know that is still the timeline, still the process. One difference, though, is that I've made the decision to halt the work at Saban as far as moving our central office to that building. With the plans to eventually actually move us, eventually, our central office back to this building when Central Grade is complete. So that decision really had to be made, working with Train, a part of the project that the board has already approved of HVAC and such. Really had to be a decision this week, so as they're starting to order equipment, that work will begin in this building this summer. So it's something that we'll be looking most likely for some leased space, or if we find something free would be wonderful. If, if there's any business space that's ready to kind of turn key for us to move into. For a three-year period, starting in, you know, that early twenty twenty-six time. For a three, two to three years is what we're looking at most likely, to wanna make sure we have plenty of time to Central Grade that is done right. We will be looking for some space, and so I'm gonna be working a lot to try and look at securing that. So free would be great, but leasing, we are working with Scott Hardy, I've had, Christine and I have both had multiple conversations with him. And so we do think that at a very affordable rate, there's a lot of business space right now in this community open. I've had the chance to go look at a few of them even over the last few days, so that is something that I just do wanna make clear. And, and the board and community to know that, you know, we, we really, we love this part of being downtown, a part of this, the community here. And this gives us the opportunity to have this back in our central office here permanently, once the Central Grade building is done.
How many square feet do you need?
I think we estimate somewhere between fifteen and twenty thousand square foot, and about how many offices did you say?
I think at a minimum, twenty-four.
Yeah, about twenty-four offices is what we would need for a space to be able to move into. So again, we're working with Scott Hardy, so if anybody's out there wants to have that, if anybody is like, has any free possible space of business. Looking for a write-off and text write-off and some support to our schools, to help our overall projects. Would love to talk to them, would love to have that conversation, it's important to me that, you know, our staff have kind of roughed it here the last year. You know, if you're here right now, it's pretty warm, the boiler doesn't, there's a reason why we're replacing them, you know, across the district. But, you know, they, we wanna try and move something, and it's a very businesslike, you know, space that is. Is quality for our staff to work in during that time period, and then when we move back here, that we've turned this into the space that's final that needs to happen, but. Right now, the key part is for us to, you know, finish our time here, get that planning of Central Grade going. And find that place to move to for that two to three-year period, starting most likely spring, summerish, you know, of twenty-six.
You don't need a motion.
Do not.
You're just letting the board.
Do not, you know, we will update all this kind of with our, our bond updates and finance through the board, but I just. I did have the chance to sit with each of our employee groups here at Central Office this morning to let each, all of them know. You know, we, we put a lot of work in, but just after all the financial elements, all of it, this is the decision I made forward, and. I'm excited for us to end up here and still be in town, close to a, a lot of our partners and, in the community that we often work with, and. It's what I feel is right to do.
Public comment, second public comment, is there any additional?
I have not received any.
Okay. Closing remarks, a, a couple of just. Notes that we didn't cover, you know, we lost a couple of staff members or former staff members as well, so. Condolences obviously to, with Terry Smith and Gail King families. I know that hit a lot of our district and across the board, our community hard as well. And on, we also did obviously have an election welcoming Ty Schmidt to the board. Just as previous practice has been, is that we did extend an invite to Ty to join. Both this and December board meeting. He was unavailable, I think, for both, he's, I think, trying to make that December one workload, I told him to not stress about it, but it's, it's up to him, but he is. Welcome to join us at the, at the table as a non-voting member if he wishes to do so. With that, I would move to adjourn the meeting, do I have a motion?
Second.
Second. I think I did, I, I've got a blank page now, so. Stacy, please conduct a roll call vote.
Do you want me to?
I couldn't remember if it was which one. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay, meeting adjourned.